We're ready? That was a resounding yes. Good evening, at 6:30, April 18th, 2022, I'd like to call the Nevada Community School District's Board Meeting into session, and I would seek approval of the agenda with the one addition placed at our table tonight. What favor?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda as discussed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we have something to talk about. Public comment, Brian, do we have anybody? Well, this brings us to 4.1, as you heard the speech prior to the start of the meeting, please speak into the mic, and we'd like to hear from ARC of Story County. Tonight, we have Erin Murphy and Tricia Crane, and I would turn our attentions to them.
Okay, so I am Erin Murphy, I am an elementary school counselor in the district and a learning team coach.
And I am Tricia Crane with ARC of Story County. I approached the school last fall. The ARC is a nationally-based organization for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and I get something every week from the National ARC office in regards to some type of community propaganda that we can share with the community in regards to teaching people about the lives of individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And I personally kind of, my personal and professional philosophy in life is that I want to assist others in living a life that the rest of us take for granted. And this series kind of spoke to me on that, and so I approached Dr. Astmas about perhaps doing an outreach with the schools here to see if any of them, any of them would be interested in using this film series as a tool to educate our students on what it's like for individuals in our community who live with disabilities. So the film series showcases individuals with disabilities as they showcase their struggles and their barriers, their personal lives, and their achievements, and we, as Erin will speak, use it as a way to facilitate classroom discussion around the stigma of individuals with disabilities.
So this is kind of our timeline of events. After Tricia reached out, we met as an elementary case management team, which we meet weekly, and we discussed this, and it wasn't, you know, planned curriculum, but we decided to move forward with it. I teach all of the life skills classes this year, and I thought there was room to do five weeks of this curriculum, and so we kind of moved things, some things around. So then Tricia and the ARC purchased the film series, and then at that time, I viewed all of the films, looked at my standards as a school counselor, attached them. They provided a pre and post test, which was really nice, or a survey, to get growth from the kids to gain an understanding with data. I actually reached out to a couple of parents in our elementary school that have children with disabilities and just asked for their perspective and what really was important to address from their perspective. One of them actually gave me a book that she used with her own children to help with the understanding, so that was used with the students as well. Planned the lessons, and then I used CSOW to communicate with families, and so I reached out to them and let them know our goals for the unit, and then reached out to teachers via email just to let them know that this was going to happen. And it was really nice because CSOW, you can use that to also kind of teach the parents what you're teaching the kids, and so it was a great way to communicate, like person-first language, you know, we don't start with somebody's struggle or disability, we call them by their name, just a simple thing that we can adjust. And then in December, I started teaching it for five weeks, gave the pre and post test, and then today we can share some of the results. So these are the three goals. Two of them were kind of similar to what the ARC or the disability film series suggested, so that would be one and two, and then my school counselor take based on my standards and what I teach was the third one, the perspective-taking and empathy, and that importance of person-first language. So those were our goals. And then these are my standards, so I have the ASCA mindset and behaviors that I follow, and then I also have the State of Iowa social-emotional learning standards, and so very similar language, but I look at both when planning my curriculum, and so it fits in well with quite a few. And then they interact effectively with those who are similar and different from oneself. Obviously, that's a, you hope to see that over time as an elementary school council, you're kind of the, you know, first exposure, planting seeds, and so hopefully we'll see that over time as well. So this is just a couple of still screenshots of two of the films, so two of them were little boys with Down Syndrome. One was playing on his baseball team, and the mom got very emotional in the film and, you know, kind of hoped, just shared like, she just hoped that her son was treated just as well as everybody else, and this one is little Max, and then on the right is Jaden, who has severe autism. So we talked about autism spectrum disorder, and there was another video about an older boy who has autism spectrum disorder and also cerebral palsy, and was told by a doctor that he would never walk or talk, and he is doing both of them. And so there were four films, I didn't show the one with the first and second graders just because it talked about dating, and we don't encourage that in elementary schools, so, but they were great, great films. The kids were very engaged during this time. So here are some of the survey results, I didn't want to put them all on there, but if you'll notice at the top is the pre-survey, bottom right was post-survey. So we went from, do you know what a disability is, from 80% yes and 13%, I'm not sure, to after watching the movies, 90% yes and 8.7%, I am not sure. How comfortable are you with people with disabilities? So the purple is very comfortable, so it's 28% in the pre, and then the post was 33.9%. And then very uncomfortable, I kind of looked at the extremes, that also went down a little bit. And then this one is pretty important. Would you be more likely to talk to somebody with a disability or be friends with them after watching the movies? And 80% said yes, so that 80% is kind of our benchmark always with our data. And then I just, here's some anecdotal, like, some of the things the kids said in the survey when they had just a chance to free write, and so I kind of tied it to the different goals. So there's just some, some of the student comments on the bottom that I really appreciated. This is third and fourth graders. I kind of stress that they can typically do the same things as us, but it just looks a little bit different, and so that was, to see that comment on there was, was good.
These are Nevada student comments.
Yep, these are third and fourth grade Nevada students. And then goal two, dispel myths, that they can achieve things, that you don't need to not have a disability to be happy. It's not about their disability, it's about who they are, so these are all student, are comments from our students. And then the last goal, my perspective-taking goal. You know, you see a lot of the, don't judge people, treat people how you want to be treated. It's not about their disability, about, it's about who they are, that you always include people and be nice, so just evidence of understanding. And that's really all I have. I don't know if you want to add some more comments? She came in and watched, but yeah.
I came in and observed, I was so impressed when Erin sent me her goals ahead of time, I didn't know that teachers had to do that. And so then I forwarded them to Cody, and I said, I'm so impressed with what Erin has, I'm going to go observe one for classrooms, and it was so enlightening to listen to what the students have to say. And the film series is centered towards the three different age groups, so there's four films in each series, one, four sets, a set of four for elementary, a set of four for middle school, and a set of four for high school. The elementary school, all the schools were sent the information, all three of them, but the elementary school was the only one that picked up on it. However, we happen to have a daughter in eighth grade who, they're gearing up to go volunteer at the state Special Olympics competition in Ames in May, and Bryn came home one day a few weeks ago, and she said, well, the teachers are worried about how some of our students will act around the Special Olympic athletes, and so they're going to keep them back from volunteering. And I said, well, do I, you know, I said, well, you know, Mr. Schneiderman didn't, you know, you know, in all the emails he gets, and, you know, I said, he didn't really pick up that he was interested in this, but I sent it to a couple of Bryn's teachers who were worried about how some of the kids were to act, and sent them the middle school film series, the questions, the facilitation guide, and they absolutely loved it, and now they're going to start using it during Cub Pride time prior to when the students go and volunteer in May. So I just thought that was very enlightening, and that they thought it would do some real good for their students in the middle school.
So Erin, you're case management. Say your title again, please.
School counselor.
School counselor, and you do case management?
We do, we just call it CMT, it's just when we administrators and counselors talk together about things going on in the building, it's not like official case management.
Here's where I'm going with this, how many cases, air quote, do you deal with? Students, looking for kind of just like a head count, I mean, if you have classrooms of these students and you're working with them, what's that classroom look like?
Like students with disabilities, is that what, or in general?
Moving on.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I kind of ask a question that I can't touch bottom on, so good for you. ASCA, what's that an acronym for?
American School Counselor Association.
So what's the parental, I guess when you hear a child has been designated and you're trying to course correct, for lack of a better term, how is your parent involvement working out? Are you getting buy-in and help from the home front? So things transition out of sight of the school and your classroom into the home front?
So I get feedback on CSOW, I wouldn't say a ton, but I get parents that'll say, shoot things back and say, thank you so much for doing this, and, or, you know, I sent some things about third and fourth graders, their take on why they're not getting enough sleep, and I sent out that data to parents, and then some parents responded with like, thank you for sending this out, and this is a good reminder, you know, kind of thing. So I get anecdotal, every so often I get feedback from parents. It is my ICDP goal, so I plan at the end of the year to do a survey of what's the best way to communicate with them so that we're, we are a team. But right now, I use CSOW mostly for my communication.
Have you noticed any behavioral changes in students and how they interact with other students with disabilities?
We have, we have one student in particular that is volunteering to go and work with another student that has a disability, so that was a positive that came that, you know, is very specific data. I was telling her, we're doing, I just finished the bullying prevention unit, and for the first and second graders, the student in the video had cerebral palsy, so it was a good tieback to the disability unit, and then in third and fourth grade, the students picked up on, it doesn't explicitly say that the student has autism, but a lot of the kids in every class were like, I think that, I think that student has a disability, what's that called, Mrs. Murphy? And so then we talked about it, and unfortunately, there was a student in the video, these are just videos, part of our second step curriculum, but they picked up on that the student was being treated poorly because of their disability, and so we were able to have some good conversations around that. So I would say, yes, I'm seeing the impact, and even some of the pairs that came into the room, they said, the kids are so engaged, and because the videos are just great quality and real-life situations, and yeah.
And that student that volunteered to work with another student, is that something that that student initiated, or do we have some sort of kind of like a buddy kind of system or program or anything like that?
It was initiated by her and her parents, they reached out to me and asked, and we just, the classroom teacher and our special education teacher made it work, so.
Another question, sorry.
Yeah.
I know sometimes like at the high school levels, they have something like a peer PE where all the students are integrated. Is there anything like that at the elementary level, or are they already all integrated as much as possible?
They are typically already integrated as much as possible.
And I don't want to speak for you, but Erin shared with me, when I went and observed her class, you had said that some of the other teachers had even come to you and thanked you for doing this curriculum?
Yes, yeah.
I have a question. Do you see that this disability awareness unit would be something you'll bring forward into the curriculum in future years then, incorporating it into every year or every other year, sort of a curriculum?
Yeah, so I, my curriculum is typically on a two-year rotation because of multi-age, it's just easier to do, well, it makes more sense, so we're not repeating it, same curriculum two years in a row. So yes, in two years, I plan to bring it back and do the same, you know, obviously small tweaks of things that could be done better, but yes.
Great, I'd love to hear how that goes in two years too then.
Have you spoken with any other counselors about what they're doing for disability awareness, and is there anything that has caught your attention?
Outside of the district, I haven't really reached out to anybody since, we used to meet or have conversations over Zoom, and since the pandemic, we kind of all, things got a little bit overwhelming or different, so we haven't. Devin and I have been talking a little bit because they're going to do it now at the middle school, so Devin, Glenn, and the middle school school counselor and I have connected.
Sure, yeah, it's a good start.
Yeah.
My, I have several board members who have adult children with disabilities, and back in the day, the AEA used to do a very similar training, they would go into classrooms that specifically had children with disabilities mainstreamed into the classroom and do something similar like this, and then of course, because of budget cuts and time restraints, the AEA quit doing that. But they felt that it was a game changer for their child when they were in school for the other students to be able to get that type of stigma training and awareness training, and so, you know, this is just something that used to be done back in the day, but that hopefully we can reignite and show some awareness on.
Well, Tricia, I just want to say thank you for reaching out to the school, and Erin, thank you for picking up on it. I think you, you said it's part of it is planting a seed too.
Yep.
And I think that's very crucial, so thank you both.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kind of was what our online presence looks like too, we don't get very many people checking in on us. Well, with that said, appreciate the effort, ladies. That brings us to our one action agenda item, we have a budget resolution in regards to our surplus levy debt, and I think Brian could explain that. Had that resolution last year because we needed GEO bond. It is only what a modest 2%, but it still is debt that we have the ability to take care of now, so it just opens up our future. I don't think we would have anything callable left to address, would we?
No.
Okay.
Because the next bond issue is GEO bonds for middle school. Those were just issued last year.
Yep. Lot down a lot of debt, Brian, I think this is our last swing at it. So the board already approved, approved this in the budget, but this is a required resolution that goes with that. Anybody have any questions, administration? Pretty well laid out, pretty well described. In the future, we would have this resolution if, if we were to surplus levy debt service, in the future, we would have this resolution at the same time that you approved the budget. We did not have this from Alders and Cooney at that time, so. Is it roll call?
Brian, for the record, do we need to write, do we, yeah, let me try that again, do we need to say the entire resolution, read it like it's written for the motion?
No, just, just the title would be fine.
So I could just say I move the fiscal year 2023 budget resolution for the surplus levy? Or no? I'm going to just read it. I move the resolution authorizing the redemption of general obligation school bonds, series 2012 dated, no, that's, yeah, December 1st, 2012, and confirming the levy of a tax for fiscal year 2023 for the redemption of general obligation school bonds. And the rest of it.
Got a second?
One second, Deb.
Motion in a second to approve the FY23 budget resolution as described and discussed. Any further questions, administration or amongst ourselves? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. Consent agenda. Was talking to a Ballard parent, and they were asking about the wrestling program, and I said, well, you guys, I guess it bailed on us, she went on to say that her recollection of having a discussion about it is they were working on 18 to 20 female wrestlers.
That looks nice?
Yeah.
Wow.
I know. Yeah, you can be a standalone program, you got that.
That's not a problem.
Nope. Yeah, good for them. I think we're on the beginning stages of something new.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, as we made the transition out of the six, six-on-six basketball to five-on-five, the state of Iowa survived, I think we'll be finding a female wrestler.
It's an exciting opportunity for the female athletes in the state, I think they'll welcome this opportunity.
I think it needs pointing out that the University of Iowa bought the first division one program out at the ground this past winter. Here's that, when we say go Hawks. I kind of snuck it in.
I was like, you do it.
Anybody see anything in the bills, see anything in the personnel, see anything in the fundraisers that causes consternation, and we've got one of the questions answered by administration? And if not, it's bleeding.
Dr. Gray, do you know the timeframe for replacing Subats for research?
We have, we have the position posted, so everything that's open has been posted. I can't remember off the top of my head what we put for a closing date for that, but it'll probably depend on applications because that's a, that can be a difficult certification to find sometimes.
Are exit interviews done for people that resign or leave?
Not always, and there's not a standard exit, but we have done them in the past at the building level, but it's not necessarily required.
Mm-hmm, just an option.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda with the additional reservation, reservation please before us tonight.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to accept the consent agenda as provided to the board with its one addition on personnel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Heard the books, board member comments?
Yes, I'm here for once, yeah. No, things at high school, I'd say, right now, due to weather, we are having a lot of cancellations and postponements. I know even tonight, two events were canceled, and so hopefully we'll get better weather, it's like end of April and we're getting snow, so we'll see how that turns out, because I know there are some events that just have completely got half their season canceled because of weather throughout this month. But looking forward, next week, student council is planning on having a kind of spring spirit week in the high school, just to boost morals, especially as we end our fourth term, and especially since we have Iowa assessments this week, and this week's just going to be stressful. And this week's just going to be stressful and crazy. So that's kind of just like a homecoming in the spring. We're going to have dress-up days each day. Also kind of leads up to prom, that's kind of good planning. And Key Club will have a fundraiser going during seminar for backpacks for kids from Story County. Just a little like activity games for kids to do during seminar. Along with that, I know there are going to be some senior nights for sports next week. I think senior night for boys soccer and for girls tennis next week. So kind of just getting people to go to those events that don't normally get attended. And plus, since most of them are canceled, hopefully, they'll happen. I know this week, like I said, we have Iowa assessments and Friday will be day of service, hopefully, if weather stays well, where we'll just, we're just going to have a ton of high school students go across Nevada or just stay at the school working on service projects in memory of Dr. Ludwig, so Heather Ludwig. So hopefully, that happens. And they said they'd make a decision Thursday depending on weather. So we'll see what happens there, but everything's going good. I know everyone's, so far, there's not too much senioritis that I've seen from students. So hopefully, things will go well for the last month and a half.
Anything going to be done with prom over here in this building or is?
The promenade is at T.O.P. The prom.
The banquet.
Dinner banquet and dance is at Gatherings. And then the junior parents will host the after-prom back at the high school afterwards.
So this facility is not?
This facility is not, no. T.O.P. will be.
Me either. Well, hearing nothing, why don't we look at our calendars here coming up? Because I see we're going to sneak right into the month of May and then turn around and have a meeting. You're going to be bringing us details about graduation in regards to times and places here, I assume, next month?
Yep, that will be, that will be coming.
Well. That would be the time if anybody would like to read us into closed session for Dr. Gray's review. Ben, thank you for your evening. Appreciate your attendance. That's a kind way of asking you though.
I need to ask him something, so I'm going to read the motion.
Oh, okay.
I move we go into, pursuant to the Iowa code, section 21 subsection 5.1. I move we go into closed session to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation and that individual requests a closed session.
Second.
We have a motion a second to be read into closed session. Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye.